I call order the November 2nd, 2023, regular meeting of the Whittier Port and Harbor Advisory Commission at 6:01 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Ms. Loane?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, here.
Ms. Yelburton?
Here.
Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Here.
You have a quorum. Okay, now I'm going to seal the meeting from you.
I'm going to set the floor's going back to you for election of Chair and Vice Chair.
Yes, okay, so, um, I know I didn't give you the packet, very much time to read the packet, but in there you will find a memorandum that describes the, oh, um, the method of electing the Chair and Vice Chair. Um, it's following the same method that's used by the Council to elect the Mayor and the Vice Mayor from within the Council. Um, so, let me, I'll just give you a quick rundown of how it works. So essentially, I'll call for nominations from the floor. Someone will nominate someone else. Um, each person gets to nominate one Council member each. Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner each. And then, um, after each person accepts the nomination, um, if there are multiple nominees, then you would vote by ballot. If there is only one nominee, you would vote by unanimous consent essentially. Since there are no other nominees, then they would just automatically become the Chair or Vice Chair. Um, if this is the method that you wish to adopt for this election, I would just need a motion and a second, and then an approving vote to adopt the method as described. Oh, swear in. Oh, thank you. Uh, actually, first, we're going to swear in Ms. Jamie Loane and, uh, Mr. Goldstein again for, um, their commission seat. So if you will both meet me around front, so we can do it in front of all. Okay. We're to face the camera. I'm on here. Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I place your name here.
Hi, Dave Goldstein.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
The constitutions of the United States and State of Alaska
The constitutions of the United States and the State of Alaska.
And the laws and ordinances
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Whittier, State of Alaska.
Of the City of Whittier, State of Alaska.
And that I will faithfully and honestly
And that I will faithfully and honestly
Perform the duties of the office
Perform the duties of the office.
Of Port and Harbor Advisory Commissioner.
Port and Harbor Advisory Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you are Commissioner.
Thank you.
You can both sign on it, and then I'll take it back when you go in after the meeting. And please excuse the typo in Alaska. I had noticed it as I was reading. Okay, returning to the election of the Chair and Vice Chair, is there a motion and a second to adopt the procedures as presented? Or suggestion of an alternative?
I make the motion. All second.
Thank you. Uh, voting to adopt the procedures as prescribed, Ms. Loane?
Yes.
Ms. Yelburton?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Or Mr. Olsonak?
Sure, one more minute.
That, that has passed and approved. Okay, so proceeding with the method. Um, is there, uh, nominations are now in order for the Office of Chair. Mr. Goldstein?
Uh, Madam Clerk, I would nominate our current President, Nick Olsonak.
Mr. Olsonak, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations for the Office of Chair?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what, uh, Dave said. Um, Nick Olsonak would be my, uh, recommended.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Hill. Are there any further nominations for Chair? If not, nominations are closed. And since there is only one nominee for this position, um, by unanimous consent, Mr. Olsonak, you are now the Chair of the Port and Harbor Advisory Commission. Congratulations. Okay, nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice Chair. You can nominate.
I'd like to nominate for Vice Chair, Mr. Hill.
Thank you. Mr. Hill, do you accept the nomination?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Are there any further nominations for the position of Chair, Vice Chair? If not, nominations are closed. And again, uh, as there are no further nominees for the position of Vice Chair, Mr. Hill, congratulations, you are now the Vice Chair. Okay. Returning to the order of business, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, moving on to citizen comments. Citizens, comments on any agenda item except those scheduled for public hearing are welcome at this time. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Time is limited to two minutes per speaker and 30 minutes total for this agenda item. Okay. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on any agenda item at this time? Okay. Is there objection to approving tonight's regular meeting agenda and consent agenda as presented? Hearing none, it is so ordered.
Oh, uh, on tonight's consent agenda is the approval of the October 5th, 2023 meeting minutes. Oh. Let me say that one more time. Uh, on tonight's consent agenda is the approval of the October 5th, 2023 meeting minutes.
No presentations scheduled for this evening. Uh, and since we're moving on to reports, I just admitted to the Harp Master that I did receive, thank, thank you, Madam Clerk, for the letterhead and all the cool whiz bag stuff. And I typed up report and then I left it on my desk. Um, so the only thing that was really in my report that was any, of any relevance was supporting, um, yet new business resolution 2023 dashers early in a different way, but just, just recommending that we, as a commission, do everything we can to push this forward as quickly as possible and try to not deviate in any way unless necessary to just make sure that we don't. Uh, I mean, we, we applied for the grant, it didn't work out, it was kind of a bummer. And here we are again, looking at the grant. So I don't know exactly what that means, but I just added in my report that whatever we can do as a commission to remove any roadblocks, hurdles, potholes, anything to move it forward, be that, uh, we don't vary from the original plan that we submitted possibly to get the grant. Um, make sure we cross all the Ts and dot the Is, of course, but just that we help push it forward. As a community member, I'm super excited to see this project move forward, so I want to make sure we keep it going, that's all I have. Does the Vice Chair have a report tonight?
No, no idea.
Harp Master Board, would you like to give your report now?
Yes, thank you, Chair Olsonak. Welcome back, everybody. Um, want to welcome our new, new member, Jamie, and, uh, thank you, Dave, for throwing your name in the hat again. Our two newly elected or carried over, uh, Vice Chair and Chair. So let's get started here. Um, over the past couple of weeks, um, I've been discussing with Nat Geo Uncruise uh, that operate down south in a couple of different areas. They would like to move into Prince William Sound. They're a small 145-foot vessel, they run about 30 people. Um, they're titled, uh, they try to keep a real small footprint. And, uh, I've worked with the company before in Juneau, they're an outstanding outfit. And, uh, so they're, they're looking to bring a vessel in, starting in May of this year. Uh, again, 145 feet, so we're working on the logistics for basically, the only place I can put it right now is the ocean dock. We're looking at probably tying up early morning Friday and then leaving Saturday morning and just doing that each, you know, each week for the season, so. More to follow on that as they move along. Um, ocean dock isn't probably the most appropriate dock, especially for moving people. So we may have to work some logistics with putting them on the pasture dock, move the people, and then move them over there. And, you know, there's just some things that we got to look at, so. Um, we did have our surplus sale recently. We got rid of the old harbor skip for $1,230. We sold our old VAC trailer for 800, and that beautiful Cub Cadet II or carryall II went for a whopping $351. All that stuff was really just surplus to us and very, had very little value to the Harborsport. So the fact that we just get it out of Whittier, it's three more pieces of stuff that we no longer have to move from spot to spot to spot. So, um, we are still working on our door project for the harbor. Uh, Kyle spoke with the company today. The, the frames are in, we're still waiting for doors. And, uh, again, that'll replace the two in the back, uh, down, down the floor level. Um, that'll replace the main door in the, in our, in our lobby and, uh, the emergency escape door that we have upstairs. Went through this last week and got all the lighting, uh, up and running and all our pedestals. We replaced about 25 light bulbs, so got that done. Uh, I've been working tirelessly on the RFP for the harbor Phase 3. Title 12, Shelby and I worked on that. Unfortunately, that kept falling down my list and getting varied. And she sent me an email yesterday saying, hey, Title 12 updates. So we got on the phone, we did a mad dash, I think we got it well-written, the edits that we needed to get addressed. We hope to bring that to the Council on the November meeting, so. Don't know how many people made it out to Smithy's Cove, but with the, uh, help with Public Works, we removed the conxes from the view plane side and moved them over to the business side of the parking lot over there. So I think that'll open up nice. I want to look at getting some picnic tables and maybe firing out there next spring, so, you know, be able to record a little bit out there. One of the things we discussed when we were at, uh, the AHPA Conference in Ketchikan was the designation and, um, the Clean Harbor Certification. Uh, Kyle's going to take that, uh, take that on. We had a meeting, we had a Zoom meeting on Wednesday or Tuesday with, with that organization, and, uh, I'll have more information for you as we get a little closer to working that out. It's going to take a while, it's going to take some effort, it's going to take some money, but I think it's a, a good thing to strive for. And let's see. Also had a TBMP meeting online. Uh, we were talking about some, uh, basically, we're finalizing the draft, best management practices for the City of Whittier, as well as the, um, the sound. So I think we'll see something else come out of that here real soon. They're also working on wayfinding signage, uh, for town. I won't be in on that meeting, but I know Jamie, and I'm sure Kyle will be, so, uh, that'll be great. Uh, it's something we've been wanting for a long time. Excuse me. And as far as though, the, uh, water grant that, uh, Mr. Goldstein asks about frequently, we finally got ahold of the Army Corps. They will be coming to town on the 14th. There will be meeting with myself, Scott, and Jackie, and we're going to just basically do a walkthrough. They want to see what's going on at the head of the bay, put eyes on it, but we are in no way, shape, or fashion out of the queue for any funding. So it's still there, but we'll have more for you, uh, come in the next meeting. And I think that's about all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, two things here, uh, anything on that travel lift? Is that still in town, or did we get rid of that?
We have been calling the new owner. Shelby and I have been tag teaming. She called one day, I called the next, she calls the next day. Uh, yeah, we should see some movement here shortly.
I, I see it's sitting next to those old satellite dishes over there that have been there for years and years and years. And I don't think those things are any good either, so. I would hope the city moves on that, get those things out of there too, along with the travel. Uh, one other question here, uh, on November 17th, or was it 11th or 17th for the head of the bay, 14? 14, okay, good. Uh, will the public be invited to that, or any part of that, or will it just be the administration?
They didn't mention the public, they just want to get down here, take a look at it. I, I don't see why, yeah, I, I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Next on agenda of resolutions? Resolution 2023 dash 008, resolution of the Port and Harbor Advisory Commission, supporting full funding, $7,644,677 for the State of Alaska Municipal Harbor Facility Grant Program in the fiscal year 2025 state capital budget. Is there a motion and a second? Mr. Goldstein?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move that the Commission adopt resolution 2023 dash 008.
One second.
One second, that.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Goldstein?
Mr. Goldstein? Uh, thank you again, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I just clarified with, uh, our Harborsmaster that $7,644,677, and this is not for the city. The city has already received the 4.5 million. This is to support this program, uh, at the state level for this. Am I correct in that?
That is correct, yeah. So for next year, this, and I think, uh, Juneau has a project on, and as well as Sitka. Yeah, so this is basically funding their two projects.
Right, right, too. So it's not just for, it's not for us, it's basically for them. We got their money, and they should get a little bit of our money.
That is correct.
Thank you.
No further discussion, hearing none? Can we take a roll call and move forward?
Absolutely. Voting on approving resolution 2023 dash 008, supporting full funding, $7,644,677 for the State of Alaska Municipal Harbor Facility Grant Program in the FY 2025 state capital budget. Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Yelburton?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Loane?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That resolution is passed and approved.
Moving on to the new business. First on the agenda is the 2024 Commission Meeting Calendar. And I admittedly put a sticky note on mine to look at what those fall at for holidays or fell on for holidays, again, it didn't. So if anybody has any objection to the dates listed, otherwise, in my true fashion, I'm sure the week before I'll suggest something different.
Well, in anticipation of that, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair, we, uh, Shelby and I took a look at all our calendar dates. And that's why the July date is moved, because it would have actually fallen on the 3rd or 4th, I think. Actually, it would have fallen on the 4th. So we moved it to the 11th, and then, uh, we actually went back all the way down to 2025. That should be January 9, 2025.
At the bottom.
Bottom. So, if you want to pencil that in, but, uh, yeah, so we made sure that, uh, all these dates were appropriate. Other than birthdays and anniversaries, that's on you guys.
Well, since it missed my birthday this year, I'm good with it. I think it looks great. Any objections to the calendar? Seeing that, it is so ordered. Next on our new business are the 2024 Commission Priorities. The Clerk has provided a memo with the current priorities. Are there any suggestions for changes to make for 2024? I guess since it's quiet, I'll say I looked at it briefly. Looks to stay in alignment with what we've been discussing and where we've been going. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, well, if, uh, speaking now for ever hold your peace, informational items? Mr. Harp Master?
Yeah, just want to give you a little update on just how Phase 3 is going to work. Um, so right now, I'm working on a request for proposal for a, um, basically designed bid, build. Let the folks know this is how much money we got, this is what we want. Um, it's about a 35-page document, so it's not short. It takes a little time to put these things together. Um, we'll shop that out, see what, uh, um, what comes back. One of the reasons why the design build comes in handy for us is that the rapidly changing cost of doing business and construction right now is lightning fast. So there's a couple of things we need to do prior to this as well. Not necessarily part of the RFP, but the other thing is, um, we've got to bond 4.5 million dollars. The current, um, resolution that the Council signed back several years ago, um, maxed out, and there's 2.5 million, uh, bondable on that. So we need to do another resolution to the Council requesting another two, so we'll have, we'll be able to bond the full 4.5 million, basically, with transparency and legally, right? Um, so we'll be talking to the bond bank about that, Chris and I will be. Um, there's about a six-month process, right? So we have to be contracted in six months. So we have to have the money, funding, the plan, within the next six months. I did speak to the state the other day. Um, they didn't really see any issues with our package that we had submitted, with the exception of, I've got to do a little rework, rewording on, um, I put on there that I wanted a dock shack. I wanted something down on the dock that we could park our firefighting equipment in, that we could park our, you know, pump-out cart in. And there's some folks, the planners and DOT, that are, they, they kind of waffle on that, that that doesn't necessarily fall within the scope of the grant monies. So we'll work on that. I, I think, I did it in Juneau, I just got to probably do a little, call a friend and say, hey, how did you guys word this thing? I don't really remember how, it was a while ago, but, uh, I think we can work it out, so. I, I guess the big thing is I want to let you guys know, you know, we're working on it. It's, it's a process, and we had six months, and we're talking to the state, so we're in contact. And they didn't see any snags, so.
Thank you, Mr. Harp Master. And next on the agenda here, Commission comments. Anybody have anything they want to discuss? Mr. Goldstein?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, uh, wanted to bring up to the Commission, uh, to the forefront here. I happened to look out today on the way out of the tunnel, and I saw some of the smoke that was coming from the head of the bay project over there, and I don't know whether it was burning some of the materials that were burned in town that there was a big problem with, or what it was. But there was an inversion over there, and the smoke just went up, and it just expanded. Uh, and, and it just brought, brought to mind this concern that goes back 15 or 20 years ago about cruise ship emissions. Uh, and I, I just want to stress that it is a city here. Uh, we need to keep this as a focus and, and try to get these, uh, ships plugging in. I know one of the, one of the reasons that it didn't happen is because of the multitude of plug-ins that they have. But it seems to me they've had enough time to resolve this. Uh, and, and I really would like to see something in the new setup at the head of the bay and also here at the Prince of Solomon America docks, where these vessels can plug in, and we don't have to deal with this stuff anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olsonak. Any other comments?
Yeah, I, uh, got, got something I'd like to add. I don't know if it was talking about smokes and fires, but I think it's important for all of us to remember the fires we've had in the last couple of years. And basically, what I'm getting is, you know, just food for thought, something to think about, make sure we, you know, it's always something we're thinking about, you know, lessons learned from some of these fires we've had in the past. There were suggestions of, you know, maybe extra equipment, even some small items like potentially grappling hooks or, you know, certain firefighter, firefighting equipment, things of that nature. So maybe Dave can speak to it, but I just, I think we should keep that on the, kind of, the forefront of our minds and just make sure, moving forward, that we are as prepared as we can be for any fires in the harbor.
Thank you, Mr. Harp Master. Uh, the other thing I was going to add, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner comments, I did, I meant to say earlier in my report, there was a line that said, how great Smithy's Cove is. I did get a chance to go out there after you told about it. It's, uh, it's amazing what a tiny little difference of something that's been there since I've been here goes away, and all of a sudden, the landscape just changes with very little effort. It's very cool. If you haven't been out there, it's awesome. So thank you for doing that. Any other comments? Citizen discussion? Citizen discussion, time is limited to five minutes per speaker on any subject or which the Commission has control. Okay, no one signed in. Are there any citizens present who would like to speak at this time?
Yeah, sorry, I, I just, uh, yeah.
No, you're keeping me on track, Victor, thank you very much. Come on up.
Hey, good evening, Commissioner. My name is Victor Shen. I'm, uh, president of Whittier. I'm on, um, on the City Council as well. Um, the thing I wanted to come talk to you about, and this is a big concern of mine, um, I know we have this project, project coming up, and it's really exciting. Can you guys hear me through my mask? And it's really exciting, you know, we're putting together RFPs, setting thoughts to get docks, floats, and pilings repaired. Now, something that, um, my big concerns about is that we have been working on rebuilding this harbor for quite some time now. We've been piecemealing it together, and it has not been a fun process. Um, just speaking from my experience on the Council. And I've been looking at budget and, Mr. Board, you know, these last few years, you've done a great job of keeping us in the green and increasing revenues, finding money, cutting costs. But I'm afraid that right now, I, I still don't see how we are coming out ahead here. For this last life cycle of harbor, you know, we were given a new harbor with alleged funds, perhaps, I don't know. And now, you know, we're at the end of this life, life cycle of this harbor, and we got to fix it. And, you know, luckily for, luckily for us at the time, we didn't have any loans. And so I'm, I'm looking ahead, you know, 30, 40 years, when the life cycle of this harbor that we're rebuilding is going to come around again. And where are we going to be when that comes around? Could have bonds, or, I don't know, these bonds are 20 years, I believe. Um, correct? Yeah, but still, um, and, uh, and I'm looking at depreciation. And I know we talked about depreciation, how it's near impossible to fund it. But nonetheless, we should make, need to make an effort, because grants rarely are 100% funding. We need to come up with funds ourselves. And so we need to look beyond the end of, end of the fiscal year of being in the black. We need to have long-term financial goals and plans for our harbor enterprise fund. You know, we just have a tentative plan of how to pay for this bond, but beyond that, what, what plan do we have for saving money to rebuild this harbor eventually? You know, we're replacing the pilings. You know, we're replacing the pilings, the floats, but what about, there's the harbor master, there's the sheet pile, there's the ocean dock, there's the passenger dock, there's all the other infrastructure down the harbor that is going to be wearing out at, you know, various points. And we'll have to think about how to repair that as well. And, you know, I talked about this in a council discussion and some answers I got were, oh, they'll be better off than we were. And just what I said recently, I, I'm like, oh, are we really, are they really going to be better off? Like we're taking out bonds now and there's going to be other infrastructure that's going to be, you know, like I said, the sheet pile of harbor master that we haven't been prepared yet, it's going to be coming around. Or another comment was next generation's problem. And that doesn't sit well with me. And so, you know, as we are thinking about how to get, to find details of how to rebuild our harbor currently and make it safe and productive for our community, we need to start developing a long-range trajectory to make our harbor more sustainable. So, you know, something, some, you know, I don't know where it starts, whether it's a, you know, Chris, our commissioner, has been a great resource for us, developing financial policies for the city's general fund. And I've been advocating to develop, toward developing financial policies, procedures for the, our enterprise funds, with our water, wastewater, harbor, the long dock, all of that. We need to start doing that along with our current projects. Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Victor. Are there any other citizen comments? If not, then commission and administration response to commission, to citizen comments? Mr. Harbor Master?
Not so much just responding, I agree with everything that Mr. Shen said. You know, harbors, state-owned or state-run harbors, city-run, municipal-run harbors don't make money. That's why we have the Harbor Municipal Grant Program to help us out, you know? One of the interesting things that we discussed when we were down in Juneau last for our AHPA meeting legislative get-together was we talked to DOT about raising the minimum right now is $5 million that we can get from, in this grant program. Well, obviously the price of business is going up. That's a, it's a 50-50 match. So if we come up with a program or a, you know, project that costs seven or eight million dollars, that's a 50% match and communities don't have that money. I read an econ, Northern Economics did a study in 2018 for this harbor and they said by 2025, in order to maintain sustainability funding-wise, the minimum cost per foot, per month, per, per year for mortgage would be $125. That would happen in 2025. The rate would go to $125 a foot a year. That's just for the preferential and the annual, right? We're way behind that. So, and that's not even including really our current, what, 12% inflation rate? I think that's kind of where we're at right now. So sustainability will always be difficult and that's why we have the grant programs in place. I'm open to suggestions. You're right, Chris is amazing, she will, she will work. One of the things though that's really important is a waterfront development plan. And I'm sorry I didn't mention that earlier in my report. With getting the grant, I have put all my energy into that process right now. I have not had a chance to get going on that waterfront development plan, RFP. I apologize for that, but that'll be coming in the coming, that's next on the list, so. But I think it's important not only to have, you have to have that plan because I, I agree with Mr. Shen, we can't leave it to the next generation. That's just, that to me is weak. We need to have a plan coming ahead. And I know a lot of, a lot of municipalities have 20, 30-year plans out there and they work because they keep you on track. And before you do something else, you refer to your plan and you say, well, how is this going to affect it? You know, and will it work, will it not work? But we've done a lot of piecemeal here in Whittier and now I think we're getting somewhere. We're moving in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Harbor Master. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Harbor Master. Just, just to kind of recap, so things go back a little bit in history and I don't want to belong this, be legal at this point, but basically we got possession of this harbor as a result of the state realizing that they didn't have enough money in the bank. And this was not only true with our harbor, but it was true with many other harbors here in the state. And they gave us what at that time was a MRF Fund Maintenance, Repair and Replacement Fund. But it wasn't anywhere near enough what was needed to actually bring the harbor up to a better than good, what they called good, good condition. And now, of course, we've been in a position now where we've scratched for the 4.5 million dollars. And thank you very much to the administration, the harbor master and everybody who was involved in, in finding this money and pushing this and just keeping your nose to the grindstone to, to make this happen. But we still have an additional $2 million. We saved 2.5, we need an additional $2 million in order to make this project continue. Now, I need to point out that this is not to reconfigure the harbor. This is to rebuild a structure that basically was, was what was thought would meet, meet the need in 1976, 1972 and 1976. So if, if we rebuild it to what it is, we will be stuck with this probably for another 40 years. We need to look at the rate structure in the harbor, but I think our big, our big golden goose egg here is at the head of the bay. This is our chance to use some of the, some of the core money or some of the money that we have as far as the water bill and, and build something over there. I don't care whether it's a dry stack storage or a harbor with floats and fingers and we get the state to help with some of that. But if we go ahead and manage that from the get-go and begin putting money aside from the revenues that are derived from that, we realize economics of scale and we set the stage for creating a good nest day for down in the future. But it's very important to look at that. And I know Victor's shaking his head now, he doesn't want to see anything at the head of the bay, he wants that for recreation. I think there's a, a happy medium and I don't care whether it's a dry stack storage over there or whatever, but we need to set the stage for whatever goes on over there to help us establish a kitty so that we can take care of our needs in the future and not rely on state grants or federal grants, which probably won't be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Any other comments? Okay. Any further business? There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:39 PM?